Okay. The subject of our third preliminary matter is just arrived. So, uh, you know, I have five. And, um, we proceed with O'Hanlon.
Yeah.
Is it necessary? It is for the televised. Thanks. Bill's my first.
Good evening. Um, my name is Bill Witt. I'm the architect for this project. And I'm here tonight with my client, Elizabeth O'Hanlon, at twenty-two South Druckers Street. Uh, my client purchased her already. Do you approve of mailing? Okay. Would you do that? That's all right. That's all right. I forget to ask.
Um, the originals are great. Yeah, thank you.
You mind if I copy the letter?
Uh, no. Just good service. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm here tonight with my client, Elizabeth O'Hanlon. Uh, Elizabeth and her husband purchased this house in June of last year. With the intention of remodeling it and doing some slight modifications. Uh, one thing I'm proposing to do is expand the house by about five, six feet in the front, and again, about five, six feet in the back, basically in place of an existing covered deck and porch. Uh, this expansion does require us to seek a floor area ratio variance because it's slightly more than what would be allowed. I believe that the, um, the existing house is two thousand one hundred and twenty-four feet. The proposed house is two thousand five hundred and seventy-two feet, and two thousand three hundred and fifty-four is permitted. So we're requesting a two hundred and eighteen square foot increase or a nine point two percent variance for this project. One thing I did supply the members of the board in the application, I had a little bit more of a graphic for here, is a comparison of how our house is with neighboring houses. So all the adjacent houses are now shown, and you can see the, um, the massing of the house on the lot, as well as in a chart that show what the existing and proposed FAR is for our property, and how that compares to all the adjacent, uh, properties. And while our proposed house is, is not, no longer the smallest house in relation to the neighborhood, it is the second smallest of all the adjacent houses. When I say smallest, I mean in proportion to the lot size. Uh, we're proposing a point four two six FAR, the highest across the street is a point nine five one. Uh, this is an older neighborhood, so it's very dense. Uh, so clearly there are, um, other homes in the vicinity that have assumed the FAR. Most likely because of the change over the years. Uh, the other item that we are seeking relief from this ongoing is for total lot coverage. Uh, we add that we are actually reducing the amount of coverage on this property. The existing, um, is one thousand one hundred and, excuse me, one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three. We're proposing a one thousand seven hundred and thirty-two. Uh, unfortunately permitted is only one thousand three hundred and sixty-six. So while we are removing a lot of walkways, a lot of the coverage on the property, we're still over what's allowed. Uh, again, this comparison chart was a long way of telling the story, even though I don't have access to the size of every other property's patios and walkways, the nature of the lot coverage calculation dictates that even the footprint of the adjacent houses exceeds the lot coverage that would be allowed in this zone. So where we are asking for twenty-eight point six percent of a lot, you can see that other houses are well into the forty, is more than fifty percent of the lot being covered. And again, that is only the footprint of the house. My twenty-eight point six of proposed coverage includes walkways, um, patios, uh, and other, um, other issues such as decks, uh, excuse me, sheds that would not be necessarily listed in this case for other properties. So we are, again, not going to be the smallest as far as lot coverage in adjacent properties, but we are the second smallest in relation.
And what's happened to the interior of the house? Can you tell us anything about that?
Yeah, it's, it's an existing true family house. It's a raised ranch. So my clients are converting into a single family, and they're taking the door that is in the middle of the raised ranch, dropping it down to the ground floor, and creating more of a traditional village colonial type house. So it'll, it'll become a single family home.
Is the shed included in your coverage calculation?
The shed is included both in my coverage calculations and in my floor area calculations.
And if you remove the shed, it would, what does that do for the coverage? Does that bring you?
It does not bring me in conformance, but it does bring me-
Reduce, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it's a very small shed. It's a forty-eight square foot shed in the back corner of the property. Uh, that gets me to my third point. The third point is, obviously, we have a non-conforming shed, at least a non-listened shed. As I said, my clients purchased this property back in June. They had no idea, it didn't come up during the closing. They do use the shed. Uh, they like to keep using it if possible, uh, but we understand that it does not meet disentact requirements. One thing I do have to show the board, um, is just a map that shows where our house and shed is in relation to the neighboring sheds. They're not, uh, they're not all listed, or I don't have access to the surveys or Google Earths. And, I mean, the house directly next door to me has, in a sense, a chicken coop on the, on the property line. It's quite a large structure.
Until they come up here with an application, then-
Well, yes, that's true.
There may not be a chicken coop anymore.
My understanding is that that house was built, um, at the same time as this one. It seemed like a bit of a track house. Uh, and that, but it looks like a chicken coop, looks like it predates the house. Uh, I, I don't have any facts that I think need to back that up, but it does appear much over that home. Uh, but you can see on that chart that there are properties that, um, that are adjacent to my clients where they have sheds that are right against the property line and substantially larger than what we're asking to, to these legalize.
But they may have been legally documented.
Correct.
You just don't know.
Correct.
Now, following up on Artie's question, um, you can tell us about December Hall aspect of what you're doing, but there are four areas that you're expanding, two in the front, two in the back, maybe regarding as one of these. Would you-
Sure. I can trade for the floor plans if that would be more helpful.
I'd like it. I think we have to look at it as a better directory application.
Absolutely. It currently six bedrooms, I believe, because I'm assuming the existing plan, the most it is proposed. So on the existing house, the lower level has a living room, a kitchen, two bedrooms, a bathroom. On the upper plan, there's three bedrooms, a living room, dining room, kitchen. Uh, so I just looked, it's existing five bedrooms, not three. So what we're proposing is, on the upper level, a master bedroom, four, four, uh, excuse me, three children's bedrooms, master bath, hall bath. And on the first floor, we're keeping the garage, and we're simply pushing out the front to create a slightly larger living space in the front and a slightly larger kitchen in the back, as I showed you on the existing plant. It's very tight. Um, the garage will stay, and the counter room will stay. Upstairs, the three small bedrooms will stay and will become the children's bedroom. What was currently a living room and a kitchen on the upper apartment now becomes a master bedroom.
Okay. And, and what you're pushing out is you put it, you, you have some porch structure, so porch area in the front and then the back.
Correct.
And then you're expanding the two rooms, one in the front, one in the back.
Correct. In the back of the house, I'm expanding in place of what is a covered deck on two stories. So that becomes, um, living space. And in the front of the house, I'm expanding, I mean, obviously that small porch isn't there, but I am expanding and carrying a covered porch along the front. You can see how the steps come up, and it's got a covered porch on it. And what I'm proposing is to push this out in line with the covered porch. And in the back, this addition is effectively where that existing covered deck and porch is currently.
Can you show us the existing covered deck in the rear, please?
Sure. Here, you can see it from the rear, from the sides.
It's two stories?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
A door and a large patio on the ground floor apartment, and then a, a covered deck on the upper floor.
And all that's coming out?
All being replaced with the expanded ones.
Yeah. And you're reducing coverage? Would you tell us systematically how you're doing that?
Sure. Uh, on the site plan, I showed you a chart where it, what's being reduced and what's coming out. So while I am, um, I'm, I'm basically putting in a, excuse me, a two-story addition here and a covered porch in place of part of the walkway and a part of the existing porch, even though it's older. In the back, I am putting the addition exactly where that existing coverage is, and I'm removing walkways and concrete patios down this side of the property, and that's where the reduction is coming from.
Okay. And that's all together?
I'm sorry?
The walkway is out altogether?
We're taking the right side walkway out, it's no longer needed.
Okay.
Um, not to bash around too much, but the fourth issue that we aren't seeking relief for, I know, is, uh, the house currently does not have central air conditioning. So part of the renovation is to install central air conditioning, and we're proposing it on the left-hand side of the house. There's ten-foot setbacks required here, so when it's up against a house on a three-foot pad, I'm requesting a seven-foot setback to those air conditioning condensers.
I had a question about that. Why, um, with respect to possible annoyance of the neighbor next door, why would you not put those air conditioning pads directly behind the house? Your patio would be a little bit smaller, but isn't that more fair?
Well, we actually don't have a patio. Um, you know, we have, well, we have a small little area off to the side here. Uh, it couldn't go there. I ha, I can't locate air conditioning condensers underneath major windows, obviously. This, my, my client's neighbor's house, this whole side of their house is their garage. So we thought that that would have the least impact on them.
Show us, I think I know. Show us where the air conditioning-
Yeah, AC pads are kind of right there.
So it's on the, it's on the garage side of the neighbor's-
It's on the garage side of the neighbor's house.
Is that the, is that the house here on this side here?
Correct. I had some photos in the application.
Well, it's for the garages, I'm just trying to check.
Yes.
Yeah, we have it too. Yes, thank you.
And it's the top one versus here. Okay. Um, now about the shed. I mean, when Ed Maren sent out his denial letter or briefing to me about the addition, and this forty-eight square foot shed has got violations of Florida rules.
That's pretty good.
Um, it may tie a record. It is true that other people in the, in the area have got sheds. It's not uncommon at all. I don't know legalization history of those. Um, and at the moment, at least, um, under authority, the garage is being used for storage. So to what extent are you willing to consider removing the shed as part of this?
Well, I'd have to defer my client on that one. Elizabeth, is that something you'd be open to?
I mean, it's certainly a greater less important to us than the, the plans we've worked out for the house and the, um, yeah, every, everything else that we're asking. We're asking for many things tonight, and it's, it ranks last in order of importance.
Good. Can't do enough.
Maybe come back to your next meeting.
Thomas, we don't like questions.
Well, I'm sorry, Tom.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, please. It's your last meeting. You're kidding me, you have to go.
I think the architect has addressed, uh, virtually all issues very effectively. Uh, I don't really have any problem with any of these matters, including the shed.
Because it's his last meeting. Obviously, uh, I think the plans are fine. I think it gives the applicant a use of the hall, which is what we're all here for, the majority of ourselves, and the pursuit of happiness, as they say. I have trouble with the shed, and I've been historically troubled by sheds, only because that's what the trustees have determined to be a violation. And you have three sheds here, um, and they're all three in violation. If the trustees want to change the, the law and prevent sheds like that, then they should do that. We should not blanketly routinely authorize sheds, particularly in a congested area. I, I think if I was living behind there without a shed, I'd be disturbed, look, and see a shed in my, in my backyard. So I would, um, muscle signal this the right way. I would approve this, but for the shed.
That's where I am as well.
That's where I'm at as well.
No shed?
I'm not, I, for all the reasons that we always have problems with sheds, I'm not loving the shed.
And this one is, this one is bang on the neighbors', both neighbors' properties. Uh, I guess, I guess what I'm somewhat troubled by is the fact that there are some other sheds in the same kind of position in neighboring properties. But what happens with this is they sit there for decades, and then somebody applies to do something to their house which requires a building inspector to wander by, and then the issue becomes pertinent. Uh, so I think, um, you know, if it were, it come to pass that the trustees decided that they were less bothered by sheds and want to change the rule, this is not, this is not some complicated edifice that would take a lot to replace. See what I'm saying?
No, no, it's not. I mean, I, I did go over and look at the shed, it's not. Um, it could be moved into the garage temporarily.
True. I'm gonna leave that to the architect. Um, okay.
Not put back till they change, till they change the law.
Right. Um, okay. Any comments from the congregation? All right. Uh, I'm gonna move the approval of this application, but for the undocumented shed. Will I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll vote from the left.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Erie Street.
free Erie Street, from our, our husband Michael.
Do you have, uh, proof of services?
No, I didn't include it.
Oh.
A little test on us.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
I don't have the mic.
No?
So he's a good tribe, but we caught ya. I pray you the tribe love us, love me, fuck me.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your name again?
Robert.
Okay, great.
Uh, the property is, uh, Free Erie Street. It's on the corner of Erie and Langdon, and it's a four, a point four, uh, four acre parcel. It's developed for the single-family residence, asphalt driveway, uh, existing in-ground pool, and concrete patio. Uh, the house is to remain the same. The application here is basically to leave the in-ground pool at its present location, redo the coping, uh, with that concrete patio, so, ever patio, landscaping, uh, pool pad, uh, pool equipment pad, uh, fencing, and some, some painting. Uh, we're here for three variances. Uh, one is, uh, the location of the AC condensers, uh, within the front yard setback. First, on a note, in its denial, I already referenced it as being in the side yard setback. I had a conversation with him, and he had mentioned that he was gonna revise that to the front yard setback. For compliance on the side yard, it's thirty-two feet where twenty-five feet is required. Uh, the front yard setback's fifty feet and or forty point five feet from the front property line. This is a, uh, a corner lot, so we have two front yards on, on both streets. Uh, the side yard is to the north of Erie. Uh, so the, the first variance is, is for the AC condensers. Uh, they are going to be screened by existing, uh, mature landscaping that's denoted here along the front of the house. Uh, the pool equipment pad is a ten by seven, uh, concrete pad with a solid wood fence enclosure.
Could you show me where the, 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 the screening is, looks like it's right, right up against the house, or was it screened?
These, uh, two pads are AC.
I see.
Right in front of it is a large, probably a four-foot evergreen hedge.
So they're no, they're no further, they're closer to the street than the existing structures, eh?
They're in line with the, actually, they're, yeah, they're in line with the front building line. There's a little portico that juts out.
Okay.
Uh, the pool equipment pad is twenty-seven point five feet, uh, to the front property line on Langdon. Uh, it's going to be screened by solid wood fence enclosure, and there's also a solid wood fence along Langdon, so it's completely-
Where's the existing pool equipment?
Also in the front yard setback, um, it's primarily in line, uh, with the, with this front building line. It's right, it's right here. It's getting pushed a little bit closer to Langdon.
How much? Couple feet? Three feet?
I can be guessing, but it's, it's, it's no more than ten feet.
And what's the distance of the street from there, though? From where, where the equipment's gonna be?
To the pavement?
Yes. Your card says twenty-seven point five.
It's twenty-seven point five to the property line, and then there's another fifteen feet to the edge of pavement.
Okay.
There's also a, uh, large number of trees in between the solid wood fence and Langdon. There are ten, fourteen, eighteen inch trees.
There are more there between the two.
Exactly.
Like one.
The, uh, the third variance we're seeking is, uh, for a coverage. Uh, we're reducing the coverage by one point six percent for three hundred and fifteen square feet, however we continue to exceed the maximum allowable.
Because of existing conditions, huh?
Because of the existing, existing conditions. Currently, uh, twelve, uh, twelve percent, uh, maximum allowable. Uh, existing is twenty-seven point nine percent, proposed is twenty-six point three percent.
And what's the history of the existing? Was, was it all permitted, or is it just there? I have to-
I don't know when it was installed.
Nineteen ninety-nine, I believe.
Nineteen ninety-nine?
Mm, that's when the pool was installed in the vicinity.
Yeah.
Are you or another owner?
Another owner.
Look, there was no variance for the, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. I didn't mention that if there was any violations on the property, it's just an existing condition. The setbacks, just to mention, uh, let's see if I can, on the site plan, because it's a corner lot, the setbacks have to run through the middle of the house, so, so there's not a whole lot of new, um, right. We're trying to make it more conform. Front yard setback, along Langdon's here, front yard setback along Erie Street.
How old's the home?
Nineteen twenty-nine, and it's had a couple of additions that were prebiding me for us.
Okay. Let me, uh, just for my own part, give you a couple of reactions. I mean, your coverage numbers are not just over, they just completely roll away. If you came in with an application to do this, that you know about, you wouldn't have any chance.
Correct.
That's what you understand.
Understood.
And, and what that does is, is it makes us be more attentive to the other things you're asking for. And I do recognize that you're reducing coverage by three hundred and sixteen square feet to the, to the step back. And you're doing that, I gather, by, by eliminating some of the patio, basically, and putting in lawn and stuff?
Yep, the patio's being reduced. There's basically solid, um, there's solid walkways. We're going to, like, larger stepping stones with six-inch, uh, grass joints, but mainly it's, it's the reduction of, of the, of the concrete patio.
Okay. So comparatively, I guess.
There's a concrete patio here, and this walkway is being eliminated, um, and the rest of it's being reduced by the, the footprint of the patio.
Much more natural. Right now, it's like a slab of concrete in the whole backyard.
Yeah, I was, I was there when you were shopping.
Oh, you were?
And, and his grand grand student, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, he's very cute.
He's four.
Yes.
The, sort of the bottom of the pool, patio?
By the pool, there you go.
Pool?
Pool.
Below that patio? And, and I think if I read this right, this is not gonna be a lawn, is that right?
Yeah, it's either gonna be level lawn or landscaping. We have about, I think, a hundred and seventy-five trees in the center.
Okay.
But this, um, light green here is meant to be level lawn, and anything with the darker green and, and the planting, uh, symbols is gonna be landscaping, but-
Okay. Now, the other two parts to your application, I mean, the, the air conditioning units at the moment, show us where they are now.
They are... Here. Yeah, they are in a conforming location.
And, and they're completely well-screened. And even that raises a question, especially when you've got a lot of coverage issue, why put them in a place that is in violation of another standard?
Understood. The, the coverage is not gonna change whether they're there.
No, it's not a coverage issue. You've got a coverage issue. You're asking for something when you're, when you're in a really unusual position on the coverage issue. And moving the air conditioning units from where they are now totally screened and without violating any of the setbacks into a setback area.
Correct. It's, it's- Well, they're, they're having a significant investment into their, their pool and patio. They, this would be in the heart of the patio, right next to where their outdoor fireplace and, and chairs are, are going to be. I think they're, they're seeking to prevent the noise issue. Um, the neighbor's yard, or the neighbor's house is, is set back by a bit from, from where the AC condensers are gonna be. And it's obviously conforming on the side yard, or non-conforming on the front yard setback, and we have a street in between us. We also have a letter of support from, from, uh, the neighbor across the street, which I guess we would be, we would be most impacted by.
What I think importantly you're saying is that, as it stands now, they're sitting smack in the little air entertainment area.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and the noise, and I, I know what you're talking about, it really impacts your ability to enjoy the outdoor space.
And, and the other, the place where we're putting them is a really, like, non-utilized area that's not near anything, and so we just thought it was a good solution to being able to utilize the pool.
They're gonna be screened from you, and they're not gonna be-
Show us this screening, I don't see it on-
I can't help but ask my colleague, shouldn't we be saying if the, if the board of trustees wanted the air conditioning units to be outside the patio area, they would have put it into the code?
No, because here I think this is really-
If they knew about this situation, they probably would.
All right. I'm sorry.
I don't know them well.
He doesn't come that often.
I'm glad you still have an opportunity to-
The, the, I don't see this screening. The existing landscaping beds are shown with a, a light green outline.
Yeah.
There are bubbles, they're clouded here, so the AC condensers are sitting behind that, that evergreen hedge.
Do you recall what, uh-
It's like taller than I am, so basically-
But you're sitting down, we don't know what that is.
Well, I'm pretty short, to be fair, and I'm wearing heels, but it is, it is a, it goes across the whole house, um, and it's a very tall, it actually blocks, if there's a car behind it, you can't see the car. In fact, we have a little driveway space there, and you can't see the car from the front.
We've got a photo location map. Uh, we have, in the, in the back, you can see the footprints of the adjacent homes, the low grass, their homes, and, um, something like-
Okay. What's, I see where you pointed out the screening towards Erie Street. Where's the screening toward the neighbor who's on the side?
Again, his house is-
Yeah, I got that.
Back here, I'm not sure.
There's a huge fence, so I'll actually show you if it's helpful. This is how it is in front of the house. It would actually be, um, on the left-hand side behind that green, you can see that thing. On the other side, there's a huge, tall green fence that's about, uh, ten, maybe, no, it's probably like six feet.
Over Erie?
Over here, yeah. And in fact, our neighbors actually built that, and when we moved in, they came over and gave us some stuff, and they were like, this needs some painting, um, but that's in between, and then they painted it.
There's a stockade fence that runs down the, the line.
Yeah.
We'll have to know who the AC condensers are for, but that's a concern.
Your phone is now part of the record.
That's fine. I definitely need to get a new one. This is an excuse.
Let me, let me, I, the board maybe do this. Metro North 4 is well.
Yeah. I'm even Metro North, I'm more than a phone, probably.
Yes. Okay. And the other, uh, thing you're asking for, again, the pool equipment. At present, the pool equipment is directly behind the structure of the house.
Yes. Probably it's in line with this building line.
Right.
About here.
And you're moving it 10 feet farther toward Langdon, and altogether outside the structure of the house, which is why you've got a violation. I mean, request a variance. Why?
Again, just to, the pool equipment pad is abnormally enclosed to the existing pool. We're trying to open this up, provide landscaping, try to remove that from the entertaining, entertaining space.
How tall, how tall is the equipment pad?
Three feet max. It's going to be, have a five-foot-high fence on this side, and then a six-foot-high wood fence on this side. It's going to be completely screened from public view.
I know you're over there.
What's, what's in the back of the house immediately?
The east side?
Well, the part, the part adjacent to Langdon, what, what's there?
The side.
The house, opposite Erie Street.
A pond.
This is the Artsy Country Club.
I'm not, I'm not being. Fair enough. Put your finger on the house. Okay, right there where your finger is, what part, what, what room, what part of the house is there?
Oh, sorry. Hold on, and I'll tell you. Which part were you putting your finger on? Okay.
The corner, the corner.
Right here?
Yes.
It's called, it used to be called the billiards room. We call it the sunroom. It's a big, like, it's, it's an open room, it has a piano in it.
And is that in the door outside?
It doesn't.
Okay. So we put the pad there. Outside there.
Against the house?
Yeah.
We're going to have a 10-foot separation between the house and the, and the pool equipment pad, and it's, it's going to be, it's just awkwardly located.
It would be in the middle of the path, I guess.
We got a cross from Langdon, is the country club, correct?
So it's actually the country club outside.
So again, they just asked this question, a cross from Langdon is the country club?
Yeah, so it's actually a pond, the golf course. But there's a pond, and there's no house, oh, sorry.
How about there? That's where it is, right?
Yeah, so there's a pond right here, there's a house back here, there's no house here, and then the, oh, sorry, the pond's here, the golf course starts, like, here. Yeah.
Okay.
Open.
What way is this?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, probably.
Um, questions, comments?
No, I don't have any.
I think that I have no issue with any of their requested variances. I think it'll give them greater enjoyment of their home. South of, whatever, of Langdon, below Langdon is the club, so that pool equipment's not impacting anybody. There's two fences there. I understand about air conditioning noises, because I have them from my neighbor, they drive me crazy, so if you get them away from your, your dining space, I think it's important for you to enjoy your property. And just a signal, I would vote yes, but we haven't taken a vote yet.
I'll say our neighbors are very, very excited about this whole pool situation and feel like it's theirs, too.
Do they have access?
Well, we're very close with all of them.
That'll change, obviously.
They call it their club, they're, like, very excited about it.
If they get a condition approval, all the neighbors are everything, could you suppose?
That would be a first.
Okay. Just sorry.
Yeah. Evan? Cheryl? Okay, I will, I will move for the approval of the application. I am bothered by the location of the air conditioning pad and the, and the pool equipment pad, only because they're moving out of a relatively acceptable area where they are into other areas where they, the variances. But the pass with which Mr. Semetis has prescribed.
And, you know, and it is a unique property. There are two front yards, as we say, so there's a unique location with the club, it's unimpacting neighbors, you can't see it. Did I, did I say that before? I'll say.
Yeah. These are good points.
Thank you.
So, anyway.
The thing that, I mean, doesn't take my cue here, but the thing that troubles me is that you could build this previous situation without any approvals of variances, and then come back here and reduce it by a little, and then it's okay. I mean, I'm, I'm overly troubled by that in general, but.
Well, it was 1994, pre-99 was another.
It was in 99, it was definitely submitted, because we got all the paperwork from it. And I don't know what the laws were at the time, but that was part of.
So it shows in the, in the title.
100%. They submitted everything, I have all the.
And the two side yards, the two front yards might be a recent.
There was some revisions between 99 and today, so.
I feel better than that.
Okay, that's why we said these things.
I mean, I, I think the reduction in coverage is sensible, and it's a good faith thing to do. Show away that heck over. And if you did come in as a, a double matter, you'd have a hard time. But you're not, so there it is.
There you go.
All right, I make a motion to approve estimated. Do I have a second?
I'll be happy to second it.
Vote from the right, Tom.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you so much, guys. If you can come over.
It's going to be, it's going to be in the approval letter.
My husband loves having people in the room, we have smokers, so.
You like rooms.
We do, oh, in the, in the family room?
Is the smoker within the set?
It is not, but wait, it's supposed to be. I'm not supposed to do that. Thank you so much.
Bye-bye. Okay. Mike Nelly. Under a different name.
Good morning, and this is Chairman Member of the Board. My name is Chuck Peyton. I originally submitted this application, I think, back in January when I was the owner of the property, but since that time, I sold the property to Mrs. Dracke, her family, and I'm here representing, and I have quite familiar with this property for several years. As, as I mentioned, my cover letter to you, this, the variance was originally granted in 2007. Trying to sell this property from that time, although it's been a difficult market. I had someone at that time who was interested in having the subdivision done, so that deal fell through. And in 2012, I had someone again who was looking for this. Came back, got the extension. That, and that. So here we stand today. This was a very thoroughly reviewed application. I'm trying to work out some review. We have several meetings. I'll just give you a general idea of where we're going. This is the overall site, its current condition, and we've done all the calculations with regards to psych capacity. We ended up with a psych capacity analysis of 2.88 units, so we're 0.12 or 3.9% below the existing quote. We were granted that variance, and past Chairman Mr. Lustemberger, which I put in your packages, did a quater analysis of the reasoning for, for that extension. I think most importantly is, at this point, we require this extension in order to go back in front of the planning board. We've already had a preliminary discussion with them. But most important is no change whatsoever to the circumstances, so everything remains exactly as it was at that time.
Okay, let me, I do remember this application, I remember the veteran revisiting the property again. At the time of the original approval, it was, I mean, the only thing, the zoning board was passing on was the psych capacity.
That's correct.
Three lots and seven two.
Correct, that's a gap.
Right. But there were, as I remember, what I would describe as a post-of-conditions.
Correct.
That planning board, maybe others in the village, that.
That's right.
Yeah, or five. And nothing you're asking for, nothing we can grant, would affect any of that.
Absolutely. Those conditions are still in place, or we would never get a subdivision of that. Let me ask, by the way, this did go to final subdivision approval also, with the planning board, and then that deal fell through, and I had somebody want the entire property, so it's been a very difficult property. It was about a million four in the deal, so, but that's, that's, that is history.
Okay, the sympathy, the sympathy aspect. You made some money in a few deals in early.
Yeah, I'm, I'm complaining also.
The, you know, the, I looked at the lots again, and the zoning and density chart that you put on here, and, and really, the only one of the lots that fails sort of basic zoning requirements in, in terms of width and that sort of thing, before you take in all the natural resource issues, is Lot Number Two, which has a, a lot width restriction on it, or a number that is less than much required. And yet, Lot Two is enormous. Why, why is that? Why is it, there's, it's 52.8 width number? What is it being measured, is, I guess, what I'm asking?
Lot Two?
Yeah.
Here, let me go back over to the, the lots itself. Now, Lot Two would be the existing house.
Right.
And so what we've done is to provide a conservation easement, which was a condition of this. So that conservation easement is within the confines of Lot Two. It's also a much larger house, will take a much larger house, which already exists than the other two lots. Matter of fact, coverage here is conditioned in the planning board resolution to be less than what's actually allowed. Okay, so that's the reason, it's existing larger house with a, a legal carriage house, as well as a, a large house that already exists.
So as you drive or walk onto the property, that proposed Lot One is to your right.
Correct.
And that proposed Lot Three is to your left.
Correct.
And Lot Two is where that really quite attractive existing house, yes, stands. And then there's a, another structure, it says here, a one-and-a-half-story carriage house with a three-car garage.
Correct.
And at least as I see these plans, there's a condition from the, from the planning board at that time, that the dwelling, it says dwelling on proposed Lot Two, not to be demolished. What's the dwelling on proposed Lot Two?
Now, they, this is quite an old house, it was built in 1790, and I did quite a renovation to it, so back in 2003, when we purchased, and we actually, I think, spent $800,000 in that renovation. And it's also a history of this, that President Eisenhower rented this house back in, before he was president. He was called President of Columbia University, but I actually know people who say he was every day at the cycladron, and they were working on the tonic pop, and that's why he was here, you know, and then here it was there. I don't think it really had too much to do with Columbia at that time. But there was a great deal of interest in saving the existing house in its existing condition, and that's why we moved towards the cluster subdivision. I could very easily subdivide this into three very nice lots, but that would require demolition of the existing house, and I really didn't want to do that, and I didn't want to divorce.
Okay, well, you sort of, right there, touch on a, yeah, touch on a question. Let me, let me just connect. There's, there's one-and-a-half-story frame carriage house. In the meaning as is?
Yes, everything remains as.
And that is part of Lot Two?
Correct.
So you're going to have.
Lot Two.
You're going to have a, a big house and then a carriage house as well on Lot Two?
Correct.
All right.
Which is totally conforming to the ordinances.
And what's your understanding, can Lot, can the carriage house be rented out or owned to family? Okay.
That's a quote, the quote admits that if you have a parcel over one and a half acres, you could have family own it, law, children, or parents living in the carriage house.
Are there any plans to take this property and to further subdivide it or do it, try to add additional lots in?
You know, that was a condition of the subdivision approval, that there would be no further subdivision of the property.
Okay. I mean, I, I must, I did not remember that. I must have mentioned that, I understand. Because that is essentially a large area, Lot Two, and it's quite a beautiful area. And, you know, you folks are developers, you're developers, there's a certain instinct for these property like this.
Yeah.
To look at for further development, I understand.
Yeah, but the, just to come back to this, the conservation easement actually covers a good portion of, of that part of the lot, so you, you couldn't even comply if you wanted to further subdivide, but that was a condition of the final subdivision approval, it certainly, you know, accepted as a condition for the extension.
Okay. So if, if we were to extend the variance tonight, for whatever it adds on, a condition that they're being held for the subdivision of the property, that would be acceptable?
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
And also, of course, to continue any conditions that were the original.
Right. That's the point of reading the outset.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Questions, comments, folks? All right, I'll move the approval of the even further extension of this variance. But.
This is it for me.
Decades is it, Chuck?
This is a nice one. Subject to nice small, large for us.
Subject to whatever conditions still exist under the planning board or any of the village authorities, and also subject to the undertaking not to further develop this property, et cetera. Okay, and I'll put that in the approval letter, which will probably be going out later this week.
Great.
If we haven't voted yet.
Oh, that's true.
I have just made a motion to approve it. We'll vote from the left.
I'll second it. And then I'll vote yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. And you have a last word.
Yeah, I like it.
There you go.
All right.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You gave your time.